...or improvements to make things safer are palatable if not overwhelmingly desirable. Next slide. Residents would prefer to see the city dedicate funds to improving and maintaining current city parks, trails, and open spaces than purchasing land for new parks, trails, and open spaces. That's pretty common as well. Most residents, I think especially in Utah, are pretty happy with the amenities that they have, or at least the availability of those amenities. Seeing them maintained and improved tends to be a higher priority. Bywater and Butler Park are the most frequently visited overall, but again, pretty broad distribution here. There wasn't a runaway leader or most popular park in the city by an overwhelming number. Next slide. We looked at this among dog owners and non-dog owners separately just to contextualize some of our findings about dog parks. Pretty similar patterns in terms of park visitation among dog owners and non-dog owners. Next slide. Generally speaking, when we asked residents if they would be willing to see or in favor of fencing off part of their most frequently visited park and dedicating a portion of that park to off-leash dogs, we're pretty close to 50/50 here. A slight majority would be interested in seeing an off-leash dog park at their most frequently visited park.
So that's still an 8% difference.
Yep.
Fifty-six and forty-four.
Our margin of error is about three percentage points, so that's about a 5%. It would be, if it were put to a vote of the city as a whole, it would be a slim win, but a win.
Five percent is probably a slim win.
Yeah, I think so. If I'm in a campaign and it's a five percentage point difference, I'm nervous until the end. But among, there's a pretty big difference among dog owners and non-dog owners here, as you might expect. But still 40% of those residents who don't own dogs would be willing to see or would be interested in seeing a portion of their most frequently visited park dedicated to off-leash dogs. Next slide. This was a list of parks, and we asked residents to select the ones they would like to see improved the most or the one they would like to see improved upon the most. Next slide. These are, in the aggregate, the most desirable improvements. Residents were asked to select up to three. Off-leash dog area was the most requested improvement in the aggregate. If you go to the next slide, we broke that out by park. So I think it's more telling to see where residents would like to see what happened than to just look at this in the aggregate. Anyone who said that they would like to see improvements to Berry Hill Park said that they would like to see trees.
Sorry, where's Berry Hill Park?
It's in Mill Hall. It's detention.
Yeah, it's a one-acre detention park.
Oh, well.
Yeah, it's all grass. It's really nice, but it's this small, maybe about one acre.
Yeah, it's about an acre.
It's just a big hole in the ground.
And actually, Big Cottonwood Trail actually dumps into that area as far, yeah.
This question came after the other questions on the off-leash dog parks.
That's correct. Yes. Yep. The parks that residents would be most interested in seeing an off-leash dog area are Ferguson Canyon and Old Mill. But again, it's a popular potential improvement in a variety of parks. Not overwhelmingly popular. We have about one in four to one in five residents saying that they would be interested in seeing an off-leash dog area added to the park that they selected. Other commonly requested improvements, additional restrooms and just general improvements in maintenance and cleanliness, and again, just more trees also pop up frequently.
Oh, that tree. I see the contract. What would the other be, the 43?
Yeah, so that was a variety of offered responses, and that's in the appendix of open-ended responses that we'll have to dive further into.
Yeah, we talked about it. Actually, the city had a presentation years ago because of, I think, where we talked about it.
Golden Hills.
Golden Hills, yeah. When it was first built, yeah. Guthrie State Park is all concrete, so I'm not sure contract works, but. Right, interesting, interesting information.
And then we did ask residents, again, this was a survey experiment, so residents saw either a development of a dedicated off-leash dog park in close proximity to your neighborhood or the development of a dedicated off-leash dog park in Cottonwood Heights generally. Pretty comparable levels of support there. Actually, a little bit higher support for a dog park in close proximity, and that really ticks up among those dog owners. Those who are especially interested in seeing a dog park available would like it to be close by and walking distance.
Roger and Melissa, interesting information.
Thank you very much.
Yeah. And next, yeah, and then this is just reasons for support and opposition. And I believe that's the last slide we have for you. And again, there's a full appendix of all of the open-ended responses that provide a wealth of information that residents volunteered, so.
Okay, we're almost out of time, but, you know, I mean, thank you so much. Very insightful. I'm one who loves this stuff. I need to digest it more, obviously.
Yes. That's our whirlwind tour for the evening.
Yeah, we have a retreat coming up, and hopefully we can use some of this to support some decisions we have to make. But the council questions are coming before we let it go.
As soon as the final report, do you have that? Have you sent that to Tim?
I believe Tim has everything, so he can circulate that following this meeting.
He can put it on the website, I hope.
Yeah. Like, this presentation will put on the website, which is an upside that.
Yeah, the public.
Yeah, I sent you.
Yeah, I sent you that sheet of draft, yeah.
Yeah, I sent you that. It'll be finalized.
You'll send us this PowerPoint, though?
Yes.
Because I've got, and I have at least one person that's asked for it.
I'll send you this.
Yeah, exactly.
And I was wondering, my comment was about making sure there were headers on the top lines. Each page has headers, so.
That's right.
If you, because I will do, if I'm interested in dog parks, I'll search, and then I'll just be going. But it's nice to know which.
Yes.
What answer, I can see the answer precisely about which question I'm reading the answers to.
I will, I will have our team go back through that appendix and add the headers to the, those responses.
Right. Thank you so much.
Thanks, everyone.
All right, to bring back to your agenda, next item is reviewing tonight's business meeting. With our walking pledge, we have a proclamation, I think you've all signed, with recognizing it's National Void Verification Month and having a proclamation support to the council board. After I read the proclamation, I'll call the book and say, okay, we have a glass of that. It's, it's a supportive item. By citizen comments, we have two standing floor reports. We have our police report, Lieutenant Bartlett. We have our public report, we'll talk about lack of snow removal. We'll do that, and we have, I think, just a couple of action items. The first one, Mike, you want to talk about that? It's the rezon, I think we, we left, we could have public comment on it in the last meeting.
We did, yeah. I can brief overview. That one, and then it's the second item on that. This is a, it's a property off of Royal Lane. It's just over one acre. I think it's 1.19 acres. Let me just go down one slide to. It's 8120 South Royal Lane. It is before you cross the bridge and get into the Royal Lane loop over there off of Creek Road, but it is off of Royal Lane. Roa Oaks is a P U V that is directly to the east of this. That's a newer development, but this is a, an older piece of parcel of land that's been there for some time. You know, the next slide quickly. This is the existing zoning and land use. The land use designation is the long-range land use designation envisioned by the city's general plan. It's not what currently exists, but it's generally a blueprint for the city to follow. That is rural residential density, which corresponds to a zoning designation in our code of single-family half-acre, 29,000 square foot lots or one acre. Those are the three zonings that generally fit into rural. And there are some foothill rural zones that exceed that. So you can see the land use designation there is the rural residential density. With one exception, there's a civic piece, which is zoned, one-acre residential, but is a water source protection piece owned by Salt Lake City. So the subject property in red there is currently in an RR143 zone. That's a single-family zone that allows rural uses, so it's single-family and animal rights and the minimum lot size, new lots, and that's only one acre. The request is to, I think you know, the next slide will show. Well, the request is, that's fine, is to modify that red piece to half acre, which is the light of three.
Two, two half acre.
Yeah, so, so the 1.19 acre piece of land would be rezoned to RR121, which would potentially pave the way for a subdivision into two lots where there are one today. That subdivision is a follow-up administrative process that runs through staff. But this, this slide provides some context in the area of the lots that are existing. Many of the lots do not comply with the RR143 zoning. Even a few of the lots that are in RR143 zoning are significantly smaller than the one acre required.
Comply with RR121 or those other, those three.
Right. There are actually only, the two lots there, this one and the one directly to the west, that are used as single-family residences that comply with that current zoning as it cannot, piece to the north is a utility-owned parcel.
To what east is this? Is this, this above Highland, so it's 20 something?
The entrance to Royal Lane.
This is, yeah, this is Creek Road and, yeah.
This is, this goes up to the, of Royal Lane, just there.
Yeah.
You travel up there, you get across the bridge, and then you go through.
So for, given this context, you know, many of the, this, the rezon request complies with the long-range land use designation. Doesn't take away any animal rights or anything like that. It doesn't actually change the rural nature of the area. It just does allow for a subdivision of one lot here. It would never be able to exceed that on this particular piece.
That top one is the civic one?
Yeah.
The one that's just.
Yeah.
How about the 1.55? What do they have?
Uh, nothing. It's a single-family piece of land.
And that's access across this piece?
I, I don't know where access comes in on that.
Is this the one where we think that even when they're subdivided, they might not have enough area?
There are certainly some challenges. You know, the applicant's stated intent at this point, which can change, is to utilize the existing home and the guest home and convert the guest home into a permanent residence for a family member to live there. That, that will go through a subdivision process, and then that guest home will then have to meet setbacks. If it's a guest has an accessory building, it may need to have some building code retrofits to classify it as a permanent residence. And as that building is located today, it may not comply with those setback standards. There are certain fringe requirements. You have to have, I think, 80 feet of lot frontage adjacent to the road and obviously a minimum lot size of one and a half acre. So certainly some engineering and some, some design work that would need to be done there, but in no case could there ever be more than two lots. And given the context in the area and that even most of the one-acre zone pieces are better suited for the RR121 use, staff is supporting this request for a rezon. You can go to the next slide. These are just some context photos of the property. Planning Commission took public comment on this and recommended approval by a vote of five to one. The opposing vote was, as you can see here, recommended that the applicant obtain approval from the neighborhood HOA. Some members of the HOA were present at that initial meeting, and said they have a process, and the applicant hadn't gone through it yet. That process may be valid, but HOA regulations and C C N Rs are privately enforced. Documents and regulations, the city generally never follows HOA or C C R regulations. They are enforceable legally, but it's a civil matter. And certainly not a reason, we feel, to hold up the city decision process. So with that, staff recommends approval. The planning commission voted to recommend approval as well. There were no public comments received last time, nothing in the subsequent weeks, and it's in front of you for action now.
If you go back one, two slides to the, there you go. I assume Shane, that I know the answer to this question.
I assume so, too.
If it was, if it was, if it was me, I'm looking at all those that already don't comply, and I would probably just extend the, I mean, the RR121 to those other lots that are right there. But I'm assuming doing that on the fly on this application would not be.
No, we would have to, we would have to go through the process. And the city could initiate a zone change on those other, other ones. Typically, we wait until there has been an application.
I assume that that was the case. I figured I'd.
Yeah, plus we have, we have an application that is the application that we have to process.
But, well, I was talking about amending this one, but, you know.
We would, we would have to first go through the process.
We would have to call the others, because they were not part of it.
Any further questions of Mike, any concerns? I know we went through this to public comment, and then quickly, in the business meeting, there's no objection?
No, I have to go back to what's the worst possible thing. I'm so sorry. I mean, the one that I did is, I mean, they, they could raise the entire thing, divide it however they want.
And build two homes on there.
Correct. And that's kind of the most intense use.
Especially if you come into Royal, in the first two lots or right about that same boundary. I love half the two lots. I want them. All right, hearing nothing. The next item on the business meeting is the approval of committee and board council assignments for the next year. If you, you sent out a hard copy previously, and we've got one in center.
Yeah, there was a, there was a error that we resent this out. This is the, this is the one we're considering.
Okay, I think, Tal, you and I here, we talked about last meeting, but can't represent a couple of suggestions we have. We replied those, I think. Any questions? Everyone's kind of, we knew this, we visited with him, and he went through it last meeting. Look, I don't know, it'll come, so. Doesn't mean as a year moving forward, if we feel there needs to be an adjustment, we can always do that. We'll have strong friends. Okay, now it's pretty done. Move that forward. Coming back to the work session on staff reports. We had a request made by the Central Wassatch Commission. Wow, it's from six weeks ago? I think more, yeah.
I would have to remember.
I believe, yeah.
Yeah, talking about the Central Wassatch Commission funding from their fund balance additional bus service up our canyons, turning to about 60,000. And they were asking different municipalities to contribute something back to that if they would be willing to.
Yeah, have a quick summary, if you can pump those slides up.
Yeah.
The first part is the, an overview of what the Central Wassatch Commission staff presented. I think it's at the beginning of this.
Okay, the same presentation.
Yeah.
Nice.
Now I've got, now I've got Matt's up there.
Matt. Preview your slide animation.
Oh, come on.
Your slide animations are, are great. Now we're at Mike's.
Yeah, all the way. All right.
This is actually working now, if you want to just.
The Central Wassatch Commission committee had presented a lot of the objectives they're working on to manage traffic and manage the canyons. Some of those were long-range, some of those were planning level things, but, but one of the things they presented was short-term transit service solutions. So this is what they presented there. They, they identified two ski bus routes and changes they could make to either make transit more efficient, reduce deadhead time, which is the time that less is traveling with no passengers in it, or just add service volume. So they identified two changes. One is this Route 972, which was eliminating the Bingham Junction track stop, consolidating two ski bus stops into one to create a little bit more efficiency. What was gained by this was an increase in one-way trips from 61 on weekdays and 65 on Saturdays, 62 on Sundays to 79 all week. So an increase in trips from 432 to 553 trips per week. What was lost, 10% of boardings at the Bingham Junction station. So they were then, you know, they just need to drive to the additional park and ride lot. The cost for UTA to implement this change was in the ballpark of $50,000 or slightly less.
I think, I think she was saying allocated $60,000.
C W C's contribution was 60, and then there was additional from outside, which I'll summarize in a minute, too. There's another Route 953. This is just providing additional service, just more buses. So an increase from 131 trips per week to 225, so an 87% increase. Nothing's lost here. It's just more trips, more, more bus service, more drivers, more buses. This was estimated to cost about $100,000. Overall, the, to enhance these two ski bus services was about $150,000. Central Wassatch Commission committed $60,000 out of its funding reserves. And this is what it requested contributions from a few entities to help offset. But beyond that $60,000, stakeholder groups, including Save Our Canyons, the Backcountry Alliance, and the Ski Resorts, came up with a lot of the additional funding. And then UTA actually found funding to cover the remainder of that $90,000 not contributed by Central Wassatch Commission. This is also one time, so moving forward, UTA will absorb these costs into its budget. But by the time this became a pressing issue, it was, it was too late for UTA to do that this year. So, so this is all at one time funding, and UTA will cover this moving forward. So Central Wassatch Commission is requesting, and it actually requested this from the town of Alta, from Sandy, and from Topman Heights, $8,000 one-time contribution to help offset its investment in this, this service enhancement. As of this morning, they had not heard back from Alta or Sandy. As of this afternoon, I heard from Blake Perez, who's the C W C staff, and Alta is in the process of approving a $5,000 contribution. So that's very new. I haven't verified that, but that's.
I talked to Mayor Sontag last night. He kept running the question. Did you hear that from the quarter?
No response yet from Sandy that I'm aware.
The change, with the change of council, I'm not sure what happened.
Yeah, so it's not a no, but it's not a yes, and Blake didn't have any additional information there. I did ask how the new service is going. He doesn't know yet. Ridership data is posted by UTA on the 10th of every month. So in a couple of days, we'll have that ridership data to share, to see if there's a market increase in ridership. Other than that, the, the request is just, this has all been funded already. It's all been paid. There's not a pressing deadline to decide on this contribution, but it is something that was requested of the council by the C W C, so we're bringing that forward.
I think there's almost none.
Yeah.
It needs to be a fiscal or a calendar year, but it will save, but it's still probably.
I, I don't know exactly.
Yeah, well, no, UTA was committed to funding after the channeling.
Yeah.
So that it would come in after this, like, you guys.
Yeah, well, and, and this is just helping offset C W C's contribution. So all the other entities have made their payment, and we're not offsetting that at all. This was just out of the C W C budget.
One, one piece I've opposed to, opposed is, we've given $50,000 already and opposed making a budget adjustment on our existing budget. If there was discretionary funds in our budget, we could do a good fake effort, because we've put a lot of pressure on them to do interim measurements to deal with the traffic. $80,000 is a little high, personally. Appreciate the council's feel about, you know, we're ground zero with impacts this right here. I, I'm comfortable doing something, but that's just my personal opinion, because the council was, was on the.
Can I comment? If you, if you want to consider this, it would probably be best in a budget amendment process. When we do that, we'll be doing that in the upcoming months. We, we could have that information in a budget amendment with a proposal. We have a little bit more information on the data and what, what good this is doing or not. And that, that's what I would suggest as a process. I mean, there's not a line item right now that I'm comfortable saying.
No, I, I understand legally, we'd have to, that, but that might tend to be that we would have unexpended funds from our current account or fiscal budget to cover that. But I agree, yeah, legally, and Shane would have to add is that we would have to go through one amendment.
Let me ask, the $8,000, is that part of the stakeholders' contribution? Is the stakeholders' contribution on this?
It's reimbursing the stakeholders.
Not stakeholders. We talked about, like, Save Our Canyons and some of the other.
Those are part, those are stakeholders. So this is part of C W C's commitment out of the.
So basically, that's changing our contribution to them this year from 50 to 58?
I don't, I don't.
Or 50, whatever it is.
I think looking at it that, in that way, is pretty provincial, right? I mean, we're, we're giving this money to C W C to roll it into UTA. So I think maybe taking, just ignoring the $50,000, because that's a whole another discussion, right? Continuing. Let's just think about it as like UTA and whether we think that is a benefit to our citizens. I think that's, I guess that's how I'm looking at it. And so let me, along that lines, I guess I would say a couple of things. Yeah, yeah, sorry.
Because mine, mine was more of a balancing. I was just trying to find out. Honestly, my first impression of this was the ski resorts contribution was kind of skinny.
I don't know if those are the final numbers. These were their goals in October.
That helps me. That was just my gut reaction, and I didn't know that eight was going into stakeholders. It's nice to know that there's other people that are contributing.
It's not going into stakeholders. The $8,000 would go into C W C and to their fund.
All right, not, not clear.
Would that be, it's just really directly going to UTA? And I think Christine and I can catch up, but you make a very good point. Does we continue work with UTA and sends a very positive message to them?
No, not, not, yeah, I was, mine was more of a balancing of where they were expecting these funds to come, so. I agree. I think we should be doing something. I would hope that the data shows that it's being effective. You would know whether.
I don't know. I guess, I guess I would, I would, I would comment that I'm comfortable giving some amount of money. I haven't formulated an amount.
I see the five, like, like Alta does, and I think that might be the norm across other jurisdictions as well.
Yeah, but I, I, I see some, I see some stipulations in providing those funds. Some of those stipulations, Senator Reed's comments this morning are the direct bus to Alta. And then I, I mentioned this morning, I had taken the bus down from Alta this weekend, and it dropped me off at a, I sent it to Tim, if you, if you got that email from my setup. And it, it dropped me off in a location sort of in the middle of nowhere. And I had to try, I had to walk about 20 minutes or 30 minutes to my house.
Uphill.
Uphill, which is fine, but like, I'm that kind of a person, so I'm willing to do that. But I don't think most people would be comfortable getting dropped off on the side of the road at a bus stop. I mean, that's a bus stop, if you can believe it. It's the, the stop right before Golden Hills Park. It's like the stop of nowhere. I mean, you're not going to go up the hill, and you're not going to cross right there. And so what I guess I would propose is working with UDOT in some fashion, and I know we oppose this, me personally, but could we use that area in, in an interim basis? For those of us that live in that general area, we could get a little sticker that says, we live in this neighborhood, we could park here, so that when we take the bus down, we could get in our car and just drive into the neighborhood or something. I mean, I, I just, we want to make it so that people in Cottonwood Heights take the bus. And so what will it take for us to take the bus? Because if we're going to contribute $5,000 or $8,000 for the bus, well, let's try to figure out how we can use it and make it a benefit to us.
One of the challenges is that this has already been implemented. It's already been opted for.
But we could say next year, right? Because we know that this problem is not.
Absolutely.
But we could say, hey, with the, we're going to give you this money, but hey, in next year, we want you to work with UTA to, for that direct service. We want you to figure this out next year. I'm not saying like this year. We want you to really think about metering at the base of the canyon so that people on 94 aren't, it's not one for one, one car for them, one from Wassatch to Holbar, because that backs up indoors. I mean, there's like, so I don't know. I guess I'm just sort of using as a carrot.
Well, we have got to do an evaluation with what they've implemented, and that feedback, and UTA is committed to work with C W C on that. And last night, they established committees, and one of those is the transportation committee, which I am going to be chairing. So, yeah.
May I comment on that? So we can convey that, and it can be conditioned that they pursue these opportunities. The question, though, is, is it, is the funding to them contingent upon success of that? Or just, or just striving for that?
I think striving for that, yes.
Okay, and, and I, and I think that works. The challenge is that we get the funding and they're not. and they're not successful, and.
Yeah, yeah.
We're giving the funding for the, this current year, but I think that we can document that, and I think we definitely can push that, I mean, that's a, it's a fairly grass, I think it's one that they'll welcome, actually, Carlton's been more than open, and Laura Hanson's more than open to look at those things, and transportation committee, which would be doing that, and then, the legislature's going to be involved in funding all stuff.
There's consensus, I, I would say.
I'm, I'm comfortable with five, I, I'm, I don't think we need to let any person.
If there's consensus, I'd say the next budget amendment that we do, which will be within the next couple of months, probably, Scott, correct? We'll, we'll have a five thousand dollar amount, and as part of that, we'll convey to, i- if you approve that, we'll convey to C W C these conditions.
It's with those conditions, I think.
Does anybody, what Senator Reedy said this morning was, was interesting, I mean, even if it's a clockwise, counterclockwise, back and forth, and I guess my expression would be, does that also, it seemed like it may also apply in Dick Cut Like Canyon as well? I don't know, I don't know how many stops there are at Solitude, but if there's five, that sure makes it hard for someone.
Brian, certainly not as big as the work, but it's still going, right?
Yeah, anyway, that makes sense for one, might sense for the other.
These would be denervation of what's been implemented, and it needs to be like any plans, you, you adjust after evaluation, and you do, you do evaluation and make adjustments with this, this type of feedback, yeah.
And a quick question.
Yeah.
The racks that are difficult to put on the outside, I mean, they talked about trains and make it more attractive if you did on the bus.
But they used to have a lawn, that's what I'm, I'm confused.
Yeah, I thought they did, what happened with that?
That's what, was it spent on, or was it?
It came off, was it, was it being stolen?
Yeah, yeah, that was, so it was kind of different than what someone else was saying.
Is there a solution to that?
There was a federal restriction.
Carrying skis inside of the bus, the goats and everything else, I mean, it sounds like we want to make it better experience, whether, like Christine said, not getting dropped off in parking lot, you know, like, trains, planes, automobiles, when you get slept out in the middle of the parking lot, but we've got to make it attractive and a good experience.
We want to incentivize it somehow, and make it, yeah, but I think those are good points going forward, if you look at that, and, and if Lars the person, we don't need to be called, then just hawk it out, you know, because there's certain buses that go to canyons, certain buses that can't, so the whole myriad of questions that we do.
I, I had heard that there was some sort of a federal regulation.
That's what U T A conveyed, is that there was some limit on a dimension of the bus, when you had a ski rat that exceeded that limit, so you.
So he was looking at a way to get.
I don't know if they had, if they had them in the past and they don't now, why that changed, but.
I would like to bring Laura Hanson to this meeting and share some of that stuff, I think you've all met her before, she's, she's a good thinker, and, I mean, it's.
Senator Reedy didn't like my idea, just getting some double deckers and stash it all up on them.
All right, we, we are, we're, we're out of time, so. Another item is this, you have a couple items on your calendar, and there's a couple things that are not on, on the calendar, we have a retreat, right, coming up.
Correct.
Which is January twenty-second.
Twenty-second.
Everybody's got, that's critical, that's at ten AM. And my understanding is that Tim will be giving us an outline of information to have you go through, like, in a couple drafts, that, I mean, to help do that retreat, so that we use your time wisely, we look through surprise many things or topics that have been brought up in the last few months, that, to do a support, that we, we kind of process those, and set priorities with them, it seems like there's another item. Volunteer Dinner is also on, I just got that today.
Yeah, and I was going to send that out this Friday, Council Communications, but it's January twenty-ninth, wait, not Volunteer Dinner, excuse me.
Volunteer Appreciation.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, so, there's that, I'll, I'll send you a reminder on that, but also on the twenty-ninth, and I'm sending you all this Friday, so you'll get it, there is the Utah League of Cities and Towns.
Oh, the.
The local officials day, and if you're interested in that, I'll, let me know after I send it out this Friday for luncheon and meeting.
I, I'm already signed up with, I think I've got nine with the kids, or ten, plus two guys, so.
All right, with that, we're, we're cramped on time, we have a closed meeting to discuss pending litigation, and so I entertain a motion to go into closed session, for the purpose of discussing pending litigation.
We closed the open session, I hope our closed session can still be discussing pending litigation.
So we, we have a second? Just a second, so.